Environmental Project Report. The first slide I'll talk about is our project schedule. We remain on schedule and as you have known since the beginning and the creation of the project office, this is the critical path. Planning to be here sometime around this point in the year to present to you the updated EA. I do want to pause for just one second because I think it's important. You've heard me talk about this lots. Andrew and I have been at all the committee meetings. This is a major milestone and we are in your hands for next steps. We are in your hands on this project. But I want to pause for just one second and thank the staff who work in the LRT every day, the LRT office every day, for the 18 months worth of work that it took to get to this point. They are primarily in the first and second row over there. They will wave at me a little bit to signal that they're here. And I am really pleased every day to go to work with such a dedicated and talented group of people. And I think it's important just to recognize them off the top for the work that they've put in before we get into things. So a little bit about the overview of what you'll hear today and then turn things over to someone who has lived this for the last 18 months and has since last, late last spring, led the team in the development of this EPR addendum. You already have EA approval for an LRT project in Hamilton. You received that in 2011. Was finding a suitable location for the operations, maintenance and storage facility. So it's important to note that despite the fact there is a lot of paper associated with this, as is always required under these legislated processes, this really is an update to work that has already been done. What you're looking at is a design that's probably at about 5% overall. Why? Because there are other elements of this project that are happening simultaneously, including the creation of a reference concept design that will help us move closer towards the procurement process in the summer and also intensive work happening underground so that we can build an appropriate model of the utilities, all work that had not been completed in 2011. So this is a part of a process and an update to a process. As is mentioned on this slide, there will be additional staff. What you're looking at is not necessarily the final piece. It is a way that we start to move along the process to get the final design that will be handed over for construction and that, of course, major construction would begin sometime in 2019. So as I mentioned, Trevor Horzelenberg is the manager of our LRT office. He took on that role when Christine Lee Morrison went back to our transit division at HSR and Trevor stepped up late last spring to take on that role. Trevor has a long experience in working with rapid transit and on this project and he's been leading the team through it. I'm going to turn things over to him to take you through the rest of the presentation and then I'll suggest. Answer questions that you have about this report, that at the end Trevor join us over there on the side so that we can all answer your questions as a team and make sure the best and most appropriate person answer that rather than leaving poor Trevor to try and direct traffic. He also took a bit of a spill playing volleyball. It was not the result of anything to do with the project, but I've now instituted a policy that there will be no sporting athletic activities by any of the project team before a major presentation to council. So.
Thank you. And hopefully you don't mind if I sit during this. Thank you very much. So here you'll see a slide to walk you through some of the key steps along the way. Process. In 2011, the Hamilton Rapid Transit B-line project was developed through a preliminary design and engineering process that. Which Paula just mentioned. And this was prepared in accordance with what we like to call the TPAP or Transit Project Assessment. Scope had changed, which I'll address in the next couple of slides, from the original environmental project report and therefore an addendum to the original EA environmental project report was required. Then in, from 2016 to present, the LRT team has been diligently working on this addendum with an active consultation process that included formal public consult, public information centers both in September of 2016 and January of 2017. And then in. Scope the A-line portion of this project, which you will hear about in further, in a further subsequent presentation today. Having run through the timeline. We are here before you today with an addendum of a previously approved environmental project report. However, in order to understand the addendum, I thought it was necessary to refresh your memory on what the original environmental project report contained and why it was done. The 2011 EPR was had identified a 14 kilometer dual-track guideway running from McMaster stop, McMaster University to the East Gate Square stop just west of Centennial Parkway. And the environmental assessment process is done for any infrastructure project within the province and, and the purpose of all of these type of EA studies is to assess the potential environmental impacts associated with the project and identify measures to mitigate those impacts and to develop systems to monitor the progress of implementing those mitigation measures. This process identifies that proponents must follow prescribed steps within specified timeframes, including provision of adequate opportunities for review and comment by a broad range of stakeholders culminating with the Minister of Environment's decision within six months of the start of the process, which is mark of. The new alignment of the LRT provided for a more rapid, reliable and safe approach, which provides a more efficient LRT operation with better journey times and improved reliability. To a point whereby a better integration with McMaster University campus was suggested as well as the traffic circulation for the area should remain consistent as the current situation. And therefore, in the west end of the corridor, the LRT tracks were integrated into the north side of Main Street West. This north side alignment continues east to Dalewood Avenue where at this point it transitions to a center line alignment to Paradise Road. The center running then just back to a north side running as it did in the original EA from Paradise Road to the 403 and over a dedicated LRT bridge, which was also in the original EA. The remainder of the B-line route to Queenston Traffic Circle, except for a couple sections such as between Queen and Hess, James to John and in the. The majority of King Street changed from a one-way westbound roadway to one that provides for two-way traffic for the majority of the corridor, except in those segments I just mentioned, whereas both Main Street West, Coots to Paradise Road and Main Street East from Delta to Queenston Traffic Circle, both remain the ability to provide two-way traffic. It should also be noted that within the International Village particularly, the LRT alignment is side-running on the north side, which allows for one eastbound vehicular lane to service the village and in particular, the couple of parking structures on the south side of the street. So as you see on the slide in viewing the cross-sections, you'll notice that the one on the top left of the page is a typical center platform. Oh, sorry. Yep. There we go. So the one on the top left of the page is a typical center platform design, which the majority of platforms are now proposed as this. Although early on in our design process, we were striving for a far side platform of sticks, we found that in order to minimize property impacts, the majority of stops would need to be center island platforms that also have advantages with increased passenger convenience and ease. This is what will be seen along the majority of the corridor. The cross-section on the bottom left is what would be typical out by McMaster University where the LRT tracks are along the north side of the road. And the last one on the bottom right would be the typical center running LRT with two vehicular lanes going westbound and three vehicular lanes going eastbound with Paradise. Original EPR did not determine a location for the operations, maintenance and storage facility. Therefore, it was environmental assessment would be required once a site was determined or an addendum would be required to include the OMSF into the project scope. Therefore, this is one of the main components of our EPR addendum and significant studies were conducted with respect to the proposed site and use. Just to guide you into, in regards to the location of this site, many of you might be aware. By McMaster Innovation Park, Longwood Road would be roughly up here. And on this end is the existing Chatham Street and Frid Street intersection. So currently this street is, is not there, however, well, it's actually a proposed layout of how it could work on this site. And again, the preferred site that was chosen for the OMSF is just southwest of Chadford Streets and north of Aberdeen and east of Longwood. The LRV access to the site would be via shared running similar to streetcar here and along Frid Street into site. This would also provide the opportunity for the Frid Street extension to be built as mentioned previously. Now, as part of a typical OMSF site, the following functional requirements are there. There's the connecting tracks, of course, that I just mentioned. There's maintenance buildings, the main maintenance building here where they pull in the LRVs to do any kind of maintenance on them. There's the daily servicemen or other kind of equipments for the track. You'll need a stabling yard, which is here where you store the trains overnight. The administration building, location's also part of the building. And for the project specifications that are identified in the area, such as the West Hamilton Innovation District Design Guidelines, Park Design Guidelines, as well as they need to be consistent with Metrolink's parameters around design excellence. So you will see a building that will not only stand out but could be a significant addition to the area. Again, here's just a couple other of depictions of what it could look like. And again, these are just conceptual. Another change or addition, which was mentioned previously, but it's an addition from a previously approved EPR, is the grade separation required for the CP rail crossing. The original EPR did not have a solution for the grade separation and therefore there was some hope that a level crossing or closing of the CP spur line would be obtainable. However, early on in this EPR addend process, city staff and Metrolink staff met with CP who identified that they have no future plans and designed. This underpass will allow LRVs to pass under the CP rail spur without delay whereby road traffic and pedestrian crossings will remain at grade. So this slide depicts the rendering of how this could look. And in this rendering, we are looking east with the LRT tracks down the center of the road. The eastbound vehicular lane is on your right. So again, it avoids all of the interchange ramps going to and from the 403. This is just another depiction of what it could look like if you look up from the highway. This is the LRT only bridge just prior to the. Funding announcement was a higher order pedestrian connection to the Hampton Go Center. And as mentioned in the original, sorry, the higher order pedestrian are McNab and James. And not as direct as some. And James is used for many other purposes such as traffic, truck route, future rapid transit, et cetera. Just provided the most opportunity to prioritize pedestrians. And again, connection will look to provide wider pedestrian areas, enhanced paving, plantings, possibly a pedestrian plaza, weather protection and more. Throughout this end of process, a significant suite of traffic modeling software was used to understand the potential impacts that the LRT would have on the roadway system. The models took into account that King Street is changing from a one-way arterial to a two-way road that will act more as a local circulator road for the adjacent landowners. Most left turns will be prohibited from side streets and driveways with U-turns and left turns being provided at major intersections. The overall result of the traffic model indicated that traffic volumes are predicted to increase into the future with or without LRT. However, with the introduction of our network can accommodate this track without any significant changes. There was one area of concern and that is due to the limited on-ramps to the 403 going westbound. Therefore, we are currently working on more detailed plans on how to mitigate these concerns by providing additional capacity on York Boulevard going westbound and Dundurn going southbound. This does not affect the current cycling, this does affect the current cycling network, but we're working closely with the cycling and neighborhood groups to alternatives and this area of concern can be seen on this slide. So again, as stated previously, projections of future traffic movements with and without LRT were forecasted using the three-tiered modeling approach that looked at regional, area and corridor projections and impacts. And this process shows that traffic will increase in relationship to the project population employment growth with or without LRT. And LRT will change traffic patterns, the flow of traffic and the level of service at intersections. The results of those impacts will require some mitigation strategies with proper management strategies in service. And again, the area of concern, the largest area of concern is the York Cannon Dundurn Corridor from Queen to King and Dundurn. Mountain accesses were determined after the introduction of LRT. The intent of an environmental project report is really to evaluate all environmental impacts and identify mitigation required for a project of this magnitude. The existing environmental conditions described in the 2000 EPR, which went. To determine any environmental impacts. And the following are just some of the numerous studies that you will see appended into the CPR. And there's studies such as contamination, wildlife, wildlife habitat, fish and fish habitat, air quality, geotechnical, among many others. Along with these natural environment studies, further studies were completed with respect to noise and vibration and archaeological assessment and cultural heritage resource assessment, which I will talk about in the next slide. However, to sum up the results of all these studies, they have all been reviewed and evaluated by both city, Metrolink staff as well as the appropriate ministries. And there are no showstoppers with respect to environmental concerns. All impacts are able to be mitigated and are appropriate for a project of this magnitude. So as was shown in the previous slide, there are numerous technical studies that are included in the CPR, the cultural heritage process. Seeing as the city is a co-proponent with Metrolinks, it was determined early on that we would need to follow the most onerous of process for the, for any aspect of this process. Therefore, with respect to the cultural heritage, we recognize that all Metrolinks has the Ontario Heritage Act and standards and guidelines for conservation of provincial heritage properties. Therefore, all known directly and indirectly impacted properties were screened to determine if they had the potential for heritage significance with the following criteria. Properties that were either over 40 years old, there were also a series of questions related to the physical and contextual attributes of the asset. Exist of screening questions included by the ministry as well as additional screening questions. And it looked at. Including the city of Hamilton. The cultural heritage evaluations were conducted for all properties that were determined to have potential for heritage significance. And further to that, evaluation was conducted on 53 directly impacted properties and directly meaning building impact. And it was recommended that evaluation be conducted during.
Beginning of the previous EPR to a center running operation. The Bay Street stop, like you mentioned, is not included in this EPR because haven't been directed to include it as of yet and it wasn't in the previous EPR.
And I would imagine Mary, was it Mary that we had? Through International Village, that wasn't part of the original.
Through the, through the chair to the councillor. The original EPR did have a stop in that vicinity. It was more around Walnut Street and it has shifted a little bit to the west. However, the number of stops have pretty predominantly stayed the same to the original EPR.
Yeah, but you do individual EA's around these stations too, is that not correct? That's including this information?
Through the chair to. If, if stops do change through the process, through detailed design, you will have to append or do another addendum in regards to each stop location that does change. However, those are usually typically just minor addendums to the process and do not need as full scale of processes what we've gone through for this. It wasn't contemplated at that time of the EPR because there was thought that we could get away with a grade, a not grade separation. However, we hadn't gone further the talks with CP at that time to understand the real requirements. We are leaving it up more to the detailed design phase.
Now, you also mentioned some challenges with York, Dundurn going south, but you didn't quite finish that, I would say, significant piece and that would be Aberdeen. Did you go as far as bringing Aberdeen into this study?
Through, through the chair to the councillor. Aberdeen is included in the traffic model. There will be some, you know.
Certainly since 2011 on the west side and you've already identified the, the operating maintenance facility, which is very significant land piece and holding. And there are some changes in regards to ramping and ramping out of the service in the, in west out or in thirty, in the vicinity. That's all new as well in respect to this EA?
Sorry, through, through the chair to the councillor. The, the OMSF site, yes, that's a new and, and the track, the run-in track going along Frid Street and Longwood Road, those are new within this EPR. However, the 403 flyover bridge is not new, the one going from King to Main Street. That was in the original EPR.
Appreciate that. And can I ask this question and maybe this is my process question to Paul Johnson? We are in the midst of dated 9:30 or long, long. And for the last several weeks, actually. When I, I receive the balance of this information, which I'm displaying here during the March break, the question I have is realistically, did staff believe that we were in a position to address this issue today?
So to the chair to the councillor, we're simply following the, the project schedule. So it's been known since we put that chart up first last fall that this was the timeframe for it. So we got it out. It was out working with clerks in advance of when you would normally receive this. So Stephanie and I worked together, recognizing that the normal course of, of activity and getting this to you would simply not have allowed you enough time to look through that. But we're working through the, the project schedule as, as has been presented in the past.
Hard to receive it and expect us to thoroughly understand it. I want to make it clear that staff do a great job, but we do have a responsibility. And one thing I've learned through past reports is, and I get criticism says you didn't read all the ports and you didn't catch this, you didn't catch that. So I am bound to turn the read every page. So I don't think I can do that and make informed. I guess the next question is, if we wait till the next GIC meeting, probably be at the conclusion of the budget process, what kind of pressure and stress would it put in the, in the timing?
So for the chair to the councillor, we're under an aggressive timeframe, but if, if the decision today is to, to defer us to a future meeting, then we'll, we'll realign that and also as part of our presentation next time, provide you with some detail on the impact of that. So then we'll do both things if that was to happen, give you an update on how it impacts our schedule. But I go back what's been said since day one, we're a very aggressive timeframe, but we would adjust the schedule accordingly.
No, I understand the timeline, I guess by, the pressure I have is that, are we supposed to just rubber stamp what comes forward? Are we supposed to be allowed a afforded amount of time to make and ask informed questions and make informed decisions when these reports come forward? And my challenge is you have a time frame, but so do I and that is make sure that I'm well, so we have a clash here. And again, I'm asking, understanding the sensitivity, you want to meet those timelines. What would a month waiting till the next GIC to address this particular issue in regards to passing, what problem would that create?
So for the chair to the councillor, I, I think, you know, any kind of short timeframe of, of ability for you to digest the information and work with us to understand is, is something that we can work with. Long delays are trouble, short delays we, we work with. We'll have those every value on every part of this project. So I haven't heard exactly what the timeframe would be, but I can say to you that if you need more time to deal with it, we're in your hands on that.
I appreciate that. And actually I was looking for a suggestion would be a reasonable time that doesn't, I'm not here to cause you more pressure, but I do want reasonable time to be informed before I vote on anything. So that's the dilemma I have and I'm just trying to sort of test the, get stress test, the timing though, to try and determine what is the latitude that could be provided in regards to providing us a good time to read it, but certainly not put you too much of a mind in regards to a decision date.
Through the chair to the councillor, a matter of weeks is not a problem for our, from our timeframe if that's what was required. So I think the only challenge to us would be if at that time there are a series of questions that we then need to go back and, and sort out, that might become a bit of a challenge. So if, you know, that's where we start to get into some trouble, but a matter of weeks councillor is not going to cause us any concern.
So I, I would suggest, Madam Chair, that.
And there is new eastbound traffic introduced as a result of. Origin and destination is. And the longer your trip, the, the more likely it is that you will divert earlier to, and to a, a further parallel street. So as, as we look at trips that are, that are diverting from the, for the PM, the increases go on Aberdeen from about 900 cars in the, in the peak hour up to, I'm speaking slowly because I'm trying to scroll through this at the, at the same time.
I appreciate that.
Up to about 1,500. So about a 600 car increase on an, on an existing 900 to 1,000. So that's, that's, that's the range of the, of the increase.
And sorry, Dennis, you had provided a percentage for Hunter. Would the percentage there that would be in?
If it's 600 over an existing 1,000, that's about a 60% increase.
And we'd see similar then on the other streets. I, I don't want to go through them individually, but we'll see the similar increases and percentages on the other streets that make up for the 80% of traffic no longer on King.
Well, certainly, Madam Chair, it's, the, the, the largest increases are Hunter and Aberdeen and closely into the downtown area and Barton and Cannon. The other, the other streets that see, that see increases are, are, are smaller than, are smaller than those.
Okay. And the mitigation strategies I thought was referenced by Trevor in his presentation, but I'm not certain we received a taste of what those are. People still needs to travel westerly in the instances that Dennis had provided, Madam Chairman. So those mitigation strategy, strategies would involve what?
Madam Chair, the, the mitigation includes for most of the intersectional re-timings and, and readjustments so that there's signal phases in some cases are lengthened. In, in most cases, there's reallocation of green time from the side streets to the, to the, to the through street to increase the, the overall capacity in some cases, depending on the, on the patterns of travel, which will change. The, the lane alignments might change, not so, so not the physical street, but the lane pattern. So rather than a, a through and a dedicated right turn lane, it might become a through, those sorts of reallocations of, of lane capacity to, to increase that. But the, the biggest change that occurs at most intersections is the reallocation of green time and it's some of them an increase in the, in the overall cycle length to provide the additional, the additional green time. Where we're looking at physical changes, as Trevor noted, is in the York Dundurn corridor from Queen Cannon to King and Nerd.
Those are the questions that I have on traffic. I do have some on heritage and I was very surprised, thank you Dennis for that information. Very surprised, Madam Chairman, not to see anyone here today to talk about some of the heritage issues that are clearly referenced in the report and that's fine. I heard through the presentation that the heritage issue was going to be dealt with by Metrolink's heritage process, I thought I heard, or provincial process, not our local heritage committee. Can you explain why that's the case and the difference between the two?
Through the chair, if I could, I'd like to ask Don Forbes from Metrolink's Environmental Group to come down and speak to this item.
Through the chair to the councillor, my name's Don Forbes. I'm with the Metrolink's Environment Program and Assessment Group. I sit on the Metro.
Environment Program and Assessment Group. I sit on the MetroLink Heritage Committee. And I believe last week or the week before, I met with the City of Hamilton Heritage Committee to discuss our process, but to debate the rest of council. MetroLink's under the Ontario Heritage Act is a prescribed public body. As such, we have a heritage management process in place that has been reviewed and vetted by the Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Sport. We have a heritage committee that's composed of both internal staff and external consultants. Excuse me. Since MetroLink's is going to be acquiring these properties, it's our process that is required to be followed under the Ontario Heritage Act. And we have acquisitions, they've gone through a screening process, then an evaluation process. And at the appropriate time in the project development, they'll go through a heritage impact assessment as necessary.
Thank you, Don. Is there a process for that? Are there those heritage advocates or people in neighborhood who might be concerned about loss of one or more properties with heritage significance? Is there an advertisement that goes out? Are there public meetings that are held, similar to our own internal ones here, that would allow the public to come out and have their say?
Through the Chair, the local stakeholders, including the City of Hamilton Heritage Department, as well as any ratepayer groups that are out there, are consulted. The Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Sport is consulted. And we do look to any designations that have been made by the Ontario Heritage Trust or the municipality to see if any impacted properties have any of those interests available. Additionally, through the Public Information Center and any other stakeholder communications that are done, the envelope of properties that are potentially impacted is described. So there is the opportunity for public consultation.
Thanks for that, Don. And through you, Madam Chair, and I know that in the report there were some appendices there that showed of the inventory of buildings along the route, there were certainly some that had heritage significance. And then I thought that there were six buildings in particular that stood out amongst all those that were studied. And a lot of information in the report dealt with heritage aspect. Those six buildings, is it possible to list those six today in terms of those that had the most heritage significance, Sir Madam Chairman?
I believe those are identified in the EPR, but I don't really have that information right in front of me.
Okay. If that's information that, just so I'm clear, that information through Paul, Trevor, or someone through the office, the LRT office can make that available to us. I would appreciate it as well. I think that's the extent of my questions right now, Madam Chairman. And if I think of any others through presentations, I'll certainly get back on the list.
Thank you. Kellie Partridge. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And Trevor, appreciate, just give them a second to switch gears here. Trevor, I appreciate your presentation. And I do hope that your injury is a little bit better after this. So on page three, where we reference the, what was included in the EA and what isn't included as far as the addendum goes, I just want to clarify that I heard you say that the Bay Street stop, of course, was not included because it's not approved. Is that correct?
Through the Chair to the Counselor, that's correct. We have not included the Bay Street stop in this EPR addendum, because that is on today's docket, actually, to be discussed. However, that does preclude if we get to that discussion item today, this gets submitted. And we just have to work on kind of logistics on how that happens. Should Committee Council actually approve a Bay Street stop?
And thank you, Trevor. You segue very nicely into my next question, which was, should it be considered today and approved, then it would be an addendum to the addendum? Is that correct?
Correct. That would be correct. It's a separate process to actually identify and check out the impact on that specifically, impact. But it would just be a minor addendum to the addendum.
Okay. And so my next question is around the timing of that addendum. And would that hold up the overall submission process?
Through the Chair to the Counselor, no, it would not hold up the overall submission. It could even be...
Along the same lines, does the EA include the stop at Gage?
Through the Chair to the Counselor, it does.
It does include that. Okay, thank you. And moving westwards along our route, how about the underpass? Is that included?
Through the Chair to the Counselor, yes, the underpass is included.
Okay, thank you. And the operating maintenance and storage yard, these are all additions. So I just don't like to assume that everything's included, but from previous questions that have been asked, that is included as well as the tracks? Is that correct?
Through the Chair to the Counselor, that is correct. The OMSF and the run-in track are included in this EPR addendum.
Okay, thank you. And along the same lines with the OMS yard and the additional tracks, are they included?
Through the Chair to the Counselor, yes, they are. They've always been costed out.
Okay. So the capital costs towards that and the land costs?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And do we know at this point, the land that's been identified, is it private? Is it public? Does the city own any of it?
Through the Chair, the land is owned by two primary landowners. About two-thirds of the site is owned by McMaster University and one-third is owned by a private individual.
Okay, thank you. And are there...
Through the Chair, the two-thirds of the site owned by McMaster is currently vacant land. The one-third of the site is currently the Sammy Metals property.
Okay, thank you. Which is in operation currently. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. And I'm assuming, have we entered negotiations at this point, willing buyer, willing seller with, is that one of the properties included?
We are in contact with the property owners for both sites.
Okay, thank you. On page three at the bottom, the statement, the successful proponent will be responsible for the final design following the procurement process. Now, could you, for the benefit of those who are here in the chambers and the benefit of those who are watching, can you just unpack that process for us a little bit? What does that mean, successful proponent?
Through the Chair to the Counselor, how this process, and I believe there's another report on today's docket as well, in regards to design, build, operate, maintain, finance, how this process is rolling out, is that the preferred proponent would be the one who's the successful bidder on the tender. And what they, the process actually, there's a pre-qualification that'll be closing shortly. That'll be narrowed down to potentially three kind of consortiums that are bidding on this.
Right.
And over the next eight to 10 months, the alternate routes. And that's really what we did in regards to the traffic model. We took into account all the approved changes that council has made in accordance with if LRT or not.
Okay, thank you for that, Trevor. As a commuter, I just always assumed that King Main were paired up. And as a commuter, that's how I travel, is either King or Main, depending on which direction I'm going in. So Cannon is one way. It only goes a certain, King Street, as you said, is the pairing. We're taking lane. And are we then going to turn Cannon into a two-way, ever road system we...
Through the Chair to...
Wilson only goes a certain direction. It stops, but King Street continues. So since we're paired up with anything, correct?
Through the Chair to the Counselor, downtown. In the east end, it does get a bit complicated because as you mentioned, it's, well, Wilson's, so there are some changes, come Sherman, and so there, we identified as the concern. And again, the roadway capacity can hand changes to people's travel pattern.
Okay. The hall, it's quite, but we're already hearing the asset mitigate the increase plea. Thank you. And when I think of this King Street, I would assume there's, if a certain amount of traffic, now 60% more traffic, I can assume that that is going to be absolutely chaotic for the people who live on those streets or have businesses on those streets. Businesses probably would love it because they would have increased traffic coming in front. What are we going to do for the people that are on Aberdeen? What are we going to do for those people who we know, as counselors, you close one street and another one is seeing an increase, we're going to end up with the resident having a real difficult time accepting that increase of traffic? Is there anything that even down the road that we're saying, you understand that this is going to be increased 60%? 60% is a lot.
Through the Chair to the Counselor, I do just want to clarify that 60% that Dennis was talking about is in the peak hour only. So this is not a 24-hour day or even 12-hour day scenario. This is, you know, you have to look at your system for its peak. And that's what we're at. It's actually PM peak. That doesn't diminish the point you made, but I just wanted to clarify...
I understand.
For the public that are listening in, that it's not an all-day scenario with that. And some of the volumes are increasing. And I know that's already crept in some of the other conversations of the very things you talked about with road diets and other types of traffic mitigation strategies that, you know, we have to watch how much of that happens on some of these routes as well, because it could further impact the amount of volume increase that's occurring in front of people's homes.
Okay. Let's see, I want to make sure that all of them, because I've written Fast and Furious on most of these. I think those are my questions for now. I think those, that was my, other than what Counselor Collins and Counsel Partridge, I was checking them off. So I think I've got the most of them checked off. I may come back if I find one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson, Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Acting Madam Deputy Mayor. I agree with Counselor Brenda Johnson, Counselor Collins and Partridge, in a very thorough, methodical and detective-style manner, gleaned a lot of important information from the LRT team up there, both the local team and the MetroLink team. And so I'm very impressed and grateful to both of them specifically. And Trevor and Paul, thank you very much for the comprehensive presentation. And I really appreciate, Trevor, you taking us back five or six years, just to give us a refresher as well, and for new members of council as well. So if you could put up, please, Trevor, Paul, slide seven, please. And I'm going to try not to repeat the questions asked, but I, as always, I just sometimes need them in my own words, so I understand them even better. So Paul, is it succinctly safe to say that if these five bullet points weren't needed as a change to the original project, today would be a moot point? Madam, Acting Madam Deputy Mayor, through you to Paul or Trevor?
So through the Chair, yeah, if the project had been announced as the project that existed in 2011, this wouldn't be necessary. Generally, on these projects, minor addendums are done. You rarely ever see no change whatsoever, but a major process like this would not have been required, correct?
Thank you, Paul. So Paul, with these five bullet point changes, I think you've said for that all of this is accommodated within the billion-dollar envelope. Acting Madam Deputy Mayor, through you to Paul, please. Is that correct?
Through the Chair, correct.
And if hypothetically, are there written agreement right now, Paul, for this, moving ahead with this project, to these five changes, Madam Deputy Mayor, through you?
So through the Chair to the Counselor, what is in place is a memorandum of agreement that we would work together to move through these stages. And this is one of those stages. So the MOA does talk about taking the steps necessary to get us through, and then, of course, signing specific binding agreements.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, Paul. So Paul, subsequent to that now, and I've asked you this at a couple of town hall meetings in front of a few citizens, and I'll ask you this here in the chamber again. So in the MOA currently getting us to a written agreement, does it account for, Acting Madam Deputy Mayor, does it account for if there's any capital overrun? I know you and the MetroLink's representatives are going to say we're going to do everything in our power to stay within a billion-dollar envelope. But if hypothetically this project came in at 1.3, will it be in the written agreement that MetroLink's in the province will cover the overrun? Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, please.
So through the Chair to the Counselor, what is in place and what is responsible for the capital costs of this project? That is not, there is nothing written down to say that if the project is 300, 500 million over, that they'll cover all those costs. But it is not a municipal responsibility. It is a MetroLink's responsibility. And so those conversations would ensue if it is significantly over. The capital cost is a responsibility of MetroLink's, not the City of Hamilton.
Thank you, Paul. Andrew Hope, just to reaffirm that beyond a shadow of doubt, from the MetroLink standpoint, please. Acting Madam Deputy Mayor, through you?
Through the Chair, Paul is correct. And actually, as I recall, just to add to what Paul stated, we did add some language to that effect of the city's request in the finalization of the memorandum of agreement that was executed last March.
Thank you, Andrew. The O and M, operating and maintenance, Acting Madam Deputy Mayor, the O and M, Paul, do we have, is that for a possible later item like the 8.1? If you want, I'll hold that question to the procurement model under discussion, 8.1, or there seems to have been a lot of latitude here on this first presentation. But is the O and M already been determined in terms of what the potential cost might be to local taxpayers? You, Acting Madam Deputy Mayor, would you, Paul, like me to hold that?
So through the Chair, what I can say is it's not part of the EPR. The EPR is not somewhere where you need to identify your operations and maintenance costs for this project. So it might be better to come back to that when we talk about the procurement model, because the DBFOM approach to this does play into your question. But I just didn't want to clarify for you that it's not an absent issue in the EPR that we've missed. It's not something that was in the original EPR, and it's not something that's there today.
Thanks, Paul. I'll ask that under 8.1, along with whether our local ATU can be on this project, too. Slide eight, quickly, please. Acting Madam Deputy Mayor, Paul. So just quickly again, Trevor, please, where were the 10 PSCs held, please, geographically? Just quickly, please, if you can recall, or you've got it in front of you?
Through the Chair to the Counselor, there's one in Stony Creek, one in Dundas, and then three others along the line in the first round, and the mountains, sorry, in the first round. And then in the second round, the other three were the three along the line, west, east, center.
Okay, Trevor, I was trying to write fast.
Sorry.
The first phase, one Stony Creek, one Dundas, one mountain, three along the line? Is that what you said? The six?
That's correct.
And in the second phase, three along the line and one where? Three more along the line and the other one?
Through the Chair, let me just get some clarity.
Yep.
Kelly.
So again, first, go ahead.
Through the Chair to the Counselor, three directly along the line, one in east, one in the west, and one central. And then there were also three community meetings held, one in Stony Creek, one on the mountain, one in Dundas.
Okay. Well, Trevor, that sounds even better, because my math there is six plus six equals 12 then, and you showing 10 up there.
So through the Chair to the Counselor, in terms of the, where all the boards were available to the public, there were 10 sessions. And so the six in the first, the seven in the first round included one on James Street, because at that time, we were still engaging around the A-line. And so in the second round, the three that had all of the boards at it were, as Trevor suggested, but there were additional meetings on mountain, in Dundas and Stony Creek, where it was more of a question and answer and presentation style of the information. At those sessions, residents were given all the information about how to submit comments back to the EPR. But listening to your feedback from the first-round PICs, you suggested that it would be better for people to have a chance to come out and ask questions, make statements and comments. And so we accommodated that in the second round.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks, Trevor. Quickly, Acting Madam Deputy Mayor, slide 11, Paul, please. Okay, so dovetailing on Counselor Partridge's questions, just on this map with your dot pointer, and I guess again, once again, I guess whatever we still need to purchase for this new O and M storage, it's all, it all would be accommodated within the billion-dollar envelope. Acting Madam Deputy Mayor, through you, please.
Through the Chair, so the maintenance and storage facility property, the western, Paul pointed out with the pointer there, the western two-thirds of the site...
Yes.
Is roughly the land owned by McMaster University. That was land actually, that was land actually formerly owned by the city, which was sold to McMaster a few years ago. The eastern portion of the site and a little beyond is the existing Sammy Metals property that would be part of the, part of the parcel as well.
So Trevor, we need to, thank you, Paul, for the pointer. It helps. Stay there, please. So we need to acquire still the Sammy and the McMaster properties? Acting Madam Deputy Mayor, through you? Trevor?
Through the Chair to the Counselor, that's correct. We're still trying to acquire the entire parcel that you see on the board there. There is one small section that the city does own for the Frid Street alignment through the corridor. However, the Frid Street alignment is being changed a little bit as part of this configuration. So yeah, predominantly all the, what you see in color is all the property acquired, and there's still negotiations for that.
And Trevor, we're going to work out the deals with both Sammy and with McMaster, and still come within the bill, and your hope is we'll still come in with a billion-dollar envelope to build train? Through you, Acting Madam Deputy Mayor?
Through the Chair to the Counselor, that is correct. That these, these cost estimates are still coming in, but they assume that this is all within a billion. billion dollars.
Well, maybe my former alma mater can give us a deal, given the $20 million we spent across the road. Okay, carrying on, Acting Madam Deputy Mayor, I've got one or two more questions. Okay, clear to Slide 17, please. So all of Houston Street will become, all of it will become now a pedestrian corridor? Acting-
Through the chair to the counselor. Even though we say that Houston Street between the Gore, which is the King Street, Southlake, and Hunter Street will become pedestrian corridor, it will still accommodate traffic. It's basically, there's a blockage of Houston Street right for the LRT tracks. However, pedestrians will still be able to cross going north-south on Houston Street, but vehicles, it'll be a service entrance only past the courthouse, just north of the courthouse. But basically, Houston Street remains for vehicular traffic and pedestrians. It'll just become an enhanced pedestrian corridor.
Okay.
So through the chair, just to add some clarity, you will not, as a vehicle, be able to cross over King Street as you do today?
I see.
So Houston will stop at Gore Park.
It'll dead-end at Gore Park, Paul. But you will be able to, from Gore to the Hunter Street station, you'll still be able to, if you want to, drive up and down that, correct?
Through the chair, there will be vehicle traffic there, yes.
There will, okay. Okay, I'm glad I got that clarified. And last question, Acting Madam Deputy Mayor, Slide 19, please. So this, the slide here is basically where the last couple of speakers were going in terms of diverted redirected traffic. And so if the LRT is built, Paul, Trevor, you're saying with those purple arrows, all traffic will be re-diverted to, what is that, Burlington Streets, the Cannons? What else is those three purple arrows, please?
Through the chair to the counselor, this is just a slide depicting kind of the where traffic could travel on. It's really showing the Cannons, the Bartons, the Burlington Streets, and kind of the Hunter-Aberdeen kind of corridors are kind of the alternative corridors to your King Street corridor. Again, it's just a graphical representation. It's not supposed to be taken at, it's, you know, again, graphical representation of where you can see traffic diverting to the north or to the south.
Okay, thanks, Trevor. Thanks, Paul. And I'll have questions under 8.1 for O and M and our HSR. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ferguson.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. And we're coming up on nine hours. We've been here to the minutes. Will we still go for questions and comments? I just want to get the recommendation on the floor.
Okay, I think we might want to have the clerk here, too. We have speakers list. Should we go through the speakers first and then we'll put it on the floor?
Of course.
Just when she was stepping out.
I want to move the staff recommendation.
Is that fine? Madam clerk, may we continue with, we have a number of speakers left?
Madam Deputy Mayor, yes, you have to go through the first speakers first.
And then we can put it on the floor, or we can do it simultaneously?
No, you have to finish the first speaker's first.
Okay.
Then he can put it on the floor.
We'll come to you, Counselor.
If you could back me then, I'll be happy to move the staff recommendation. So just some comments. I haven't seen or heard anything today that I didn't expect. And I knew the operation made facilities, probably the biggest one, was going down at the Innovation Park. I'd like to have a great separation in there for the heavy rail.
Pedestrian areas will be enhanced to allow pedestrian access, but we are not, there was a contemplation early on, so we can clarify it, that we might pedestrianize the whole route. That is not the case. So the two-way traffic from Hunter to Main remains. From Main down to Gore, that's where it becomes access of the alleyway. It's only for service vehicles. They'll be able to enter into the Gore and out of the Gore by the South Lake of King Street.
And I think what's a little seething in the picture is that it has all the landscaping on it, and that's what throws it off. You see the roadway further north, but not on the South Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Skelton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And may as well continue on the pedestrian connection, Paul. So you're, through the chair, from Hunter to Main, it is, vehicles are allowed on that section of the road? Maybe I'll let you walk me through it again.
Through the chair to the counselor, yes. So from Hunter to Main, there's vehicle traffic. Really, the road is very similar to what it is today. And then it's not a through road, though. Once you get beyond Main Street, it's not a through access across King. Like today, you can take Houston all the way down north, right? You can just keep going on it. You can be able to do that in the future.
Through the chair, it's that section between Main and King that you're, it's now only pedestrian, is that correct? Like through the Gore?
There would be vehicle access allowed. There are parking lots and access to the underground of the courthouse that needs to remain. And then, once you get beyond the courthouse, essentially, it becomes service vehicles only, which do need to service the South Lake of the Gore.
The chair, when you suggest that it's pedestrian and enhanced, you're talking about wider sidewalks, too, or is that pretty much it?
Through the chair to the counselor, wider sidewalks, potentially a naked street approach, where there's borders that delineate between traveled portions versus the, traveled portions by car versus pedestrians. Again, because there's not a lot of traffic volume, because it's not a through road, there's limited traffic going on this street. It's only really accessing the local parking lots or businesses along there. And therefore, we're looking for a wider pedestrian realm and maybe a bit smaller of a traveled realm, but it still can accommodate the two-way traffic.
Thank you, through the chair. And I'm just curious as to why this is even included in the report. Is it because we need a connection to a GO station that it has to be, that the, this report must include a link to GO and that that's why we've included this? Is that what it is?
Through the chair to the counselor, yes. It was part of the provincial announcement, so it needed to be included.
So this is the replacement for the link, this spur line? We have to have a GO, a connection to GO? So this is our connection to GO?
Through the chair, no, this was always contemplated even with the spur line. The two GO stations were the connection points. The South GO station, if you like, the Hunter Street GO station was to be a pedestrianized access, and the LRT spur down James was to be the north access to GO.
Through the chair, but does EA require a connect and a link to GO? Is that part of the mandate of this particular project or not? It's just an enhancement?
So through the chair to the counselor, because it was part of the project, we needed to include it in the EA.
Okay, thank you. Regarding traffic, and maybe, Trevor, I don't know if you want to speak to this, do the increased pressures on streets such as Aberdeen, I think somebody mentioned it was about 60% increase, does that also include the impact of introducing the A-line BRT in particular? And I could be wrong, but I understand that, what is that, the link called? The West Bus Traffic under the bus network? Does that include the rerouting traffic down Queen, et cetera, in the numbers for the 60% increase in traffic on Aberdeen?
So through the chair to the counselor, no. The A-line in Merck, and so we'll get into a bit of those details later in the presentation, but for this conversation, no.
Okay, thank you for that. Through the chair, can you walk me through, I'm still trying to get my head around how we're going to access a traffic heading west, 403, at, obviously at King, heading west, heading towards Ankers. So how is that going to impact traffic flow, Dunderne and the 403 access heading west? Can you show it to me on the slide? Is that possible?
Sorry, through the chair to the counselor. So as you can see, the large arrow there, what we're talking about is that York Boulevard really takes a lot of the capacity out of the downtown core. And that's why we've identified that we need three lanes going westbound on York Boulevard. And then on Dunderne, we need two lanes going southbound. So basically, between York Boulevard and King Street, we need two lanes of southbound Dunderne, and then they access King Street again to get to the ramps on King Street.
Thank you, through the chair. You have two lanes heading south on Dunderne, no? Between York and King, it's only one? So how do we, through the chair, is that now one direction?
Through the chair, no. Actually, and this was a subject of a change from the 2011 EPR. In 2011, there were no bike lanes on Dunderne.
Sorry?
So currently, Dunderne between York and King has a bike lane each direction and one lane each direction. So in order to provide the capacity of two lanes southbound and one lane northbound, we have to remove the bike lanes. And that has been the subject of some of the changes that's required. However, the three lanes can still be accommodated in the current right-of-way. It's moving the bike lanes of that facility, and that's what we're working with the cycling community and the neighborhoods to look at a better connection for the cycling routes in that area.
Through the chair, so if you're heading, so is the access at the Dunderne Plaza, the Penis Plaza, is there any sort of a closure there, heading westbound? No?
Through the chair to the counselor, there's no closure of any of the ramps. You still have full access to all ramps on King Street to the 403 going both westbound and eastbound.
Okay, and as well at York, there's no problem. You can head, okay, so not impeded by the train whatsoever?
Through the chair to the counselor, correct.
Thank you. Infrastructure, and this is something Counselor Maruul attached on, the water wastewater and replacing like-for-like. Can someone speak to the current state of our infrastructure along the route, please?
Through the chair to the counselor, we're just going to have Gary come down and talk. Gary's been doing work both on current state, what the relocation strategy looks like. He's also working with Tony Surge and others around what might be any potential upsizing that's necessary.
Sorry, Counselor, the chair, could you give me an idea of that question again?
You weren't listening, were you? In terms of our current infrastructure along the route, we're talking about MetroLink's will cover costs of like-for-like upgrading or replacing like-for-like, but what is on that route?
Through the chair, best way I can express that is that we didn't have any major upgrades or replacements planned in that corridor as of five years ago for a 10-year horizon. So there was nothing, there was some small water mains that we were looking at replacing. So, but there was nothing major on the budget for us to replace.
So through the chair, I'm interpreting that then as it won't cost the city anything to replace the infrastructure underground along the route? That it's going to, we don't have to upgrade the water wastewater system?
We weren't looking at any major, through the chair, we weren't looking at any major repairs. We would probably need to look at would there need to be upgrades to support development or deal with other issues, but at this point in time, we weren't looking at anything major, at least the short term.
So through the chair, would it be fair to say we'll have to upgrade what is under the ground right now to service the expected growth along the route?
So through the chair, we're looking at that in detail right now. We're working through what the possibilities are, where are there going to be opportunities for development? What's our current capacity? What's our current electric capacity? And what would we need to provide? And in the same context of what's being proposed to be relocated?
Let's, I'm going to put you on the spot. Let's do a ballpark figure. How much is our cost going to be? A dollar, $10, $10 million, $100 million? How much will this be on the hook?
I can't, not even, not even ballpark right now. We're in the middle of that, up to our net booking that-
Through the chair, when will we know that?
Well, we will have to know it before we go to market. And by the time we finish the RCE and the P-SOS, so probably in the next couple of months.
Thank you. Through the chair, if we have to upgrade the service, the way, the infrastructure along the route heading north, sorry, east and west, I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the water will eventually have to flow north, correct? To something, it has to go somewhere. And I'm wondering, will we then have to also upgrade the infrastructure to carry all the water that is now coming from this new development? And if so, we would be on the hook for 100% of those costs, is that correct? And can somebody-
For whatever we need to upgrade, yes. The city would theoretically be on those costs, but that's, we're looking at all of that, not just the, not just the upgrades along the corridor, but whatever off-corridor upgrades would be necessary to accommodate those flows.
Thank you, through the chair. It's fair to say, I guess, that that's not in the plan at this point either. This would be an additional expense that we would have to absorb?
Through the chair, that's theoretically, yes, that's, that would be our cost. MetroLink's is like-for-like, that's not like-for-like, that's upgrade to accommodate development. But we would need to do that if there's no LRT at some point in future to accommodate any development along there in any event.
Fair enough. Thank you very much for that. Sam, you have your turn. You have phase two. I'm still unable, and Trevor, maybe, or Paul, you can speak to this, through the chair, I'm still unable to get a real feel of how this is going to look. And I was hoping we would have seen a more detailed diagram and assuming that there is software available that could really show us what buildings are coming down. I mean, we had one shot of the branch, if you will, or that it's going under the CP bridge. Is there any way, if we put this off today, can you come back with something with a little bit more detail, a lot more detail, showing us this is how narrow it's going to be? We're now going to have four or five-foot-wide sidewalks or not? The pictures, to me, don't show enough of the streetscape of the complexion of the route. And I just can't get a real feel of how this is going to impact the city. Is that possible?
So through the chair, no, not in the timeframe to approve the EPR, no.
Okay, thank you. They don't have that kind of software? There's nothing available that we could get a better idea of how this is going to impact the city?
So through the chair to the counselor, I mean, we could, we could provide some more detail on certain items, but that level of design is not completed yet, so, and not required under the EDR. So I guess I could give a partial. We'll go back, I'll take that for sure. We'll go back and see what additional pieces we could bring forward. But in terms of question of the entire thing, animation and all the rest, no.
Thank you for that. Through the chair, we're hearing that there's a rush to approve this, or there's a real urgency to approve this. And I'm wondering what the rush is, the schedule that is before us? How is that determined and what is, what is the reason to have to have this approved so quickly?
So through the chair to the counselor, as part of the discussion around the MOA, this council asked for stronger language to be put in in terms of procurement of this project in 2018. And this was the result of what you're looking at is the translation of the work we did with council. So it was really the urgency is that we keep to the schedule that you asked us to. So that's what's before you. And as I say, minor amounts of time are not a problem. We deal with those on a regular basis. We're proud of where we are, but I can tell you, on any week, things are more behind or more ahead of where they should be. It's where you get to the finish line. So small amounts of change, we can still hit your targets. If we were talking about, you know, a quarter delay, a half-year delay, then we're not able to meet this timeframe.
Thank you, through the chair. Now, this target, I'm assuming, is all based around the next election. I'm trying to figure out why we're rushing through this right now. Is this so that we can get a contract out before the elections time next year? Is that what, is this what the timeline's for?
So through the chair to the counselor, we always had this as a schedule. 2018 was the natural pace of things. When the premier announced, this was about implementation, and this is a timeframe that supports that. So other issues around elections and so on, you know, I can't get in minds of how that factored in. But this was, we don't need to do more of the background studies work. This was how you get an implementation happening as quick as possible. And both the city and the province agreed on that.
But through the chair, if we delayed this even four or five months to get a better feel, a good idea on costs, et cetera, we just keep pushing it forward. The only thing that I can see in the next year that's really going to have any influence is an election, would that be fair to say? I know you don't want it to come into our minds, but is there any real reason than meeting this deadline that we have to, or this chart before us that we have to meet these deadlines? Is anything?
So through the chair, I mean, we're in your hands in terms of timing. I can say, though, delaying this EPR may not get those answers in place. We do need to follow an order of operations. An operations and maintenance agreement is not going to cross the desk in the absence of approving an EPR. The EPR doesn't bind you to the operations and maintenance agreement. So if it's to get more information on certain elements, we do have an order of operations that helps us get to that information for you. And we can talk more as we go through today about the protections that are in place around some of that key information you have. So I do want to make that clear, that while we're in your hands in terms of what your timing and your comfort level is of that, and I'll just keep telling you what the plan is, if it's to allow more information to come forward, that may not always be possible because of what we need to do first before we get to the next steps.
Thank you. And that leads me right into my final question, and that is, you know, my big concern, of course, is the cost of operating the LRT. What is our next offer?
So through the chair to the counselor, I think the question that's asked and the one that you care deeply about, we're going to talk about it a bit later, is operations and maintenance. MetroLink's is very clear with us. They will not move to financial closure. They will not move to financial close, they will not sign on the deadline with someone build this without an operations and maintenance agreement in place with the City of Hamilton. So that is a key piece, a definitive agreement. By that I mean it's a binding agreement we would sign that needs to come to you for your approval. And we've had MetroLinks confirm to this council that we are in the same position. We want to know what that is before we proceed, and MetroLinks needs to know that before they proceed.
Thank you through the chair. And finally, through legal, that would only require 51% to either approve it or turn down?
Yeah, that would be the next step in the process?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Whitehead?
Thank you, ma'am. Can I just ask, on the operating agreement, at the time, actually, the first time was a process for clarification. I'm starting to ask questions now. So the concern I have on the operating agreement is what does that... I thought we were going to negotiate principles so that we can sort of lock in the framework of the OANM. Is that the next discussion?
So through the chair to the councillor, yes, in our conversations about operations and maintenance, certain principles can be discussed and we can open up that. But in terms of the final piece on the OANM, it remains unchanged. Actual parts of it are part of the bid process for that. In terms of getting stronger estimates, once we know what we're building, we can do that. In terms of deciding on principles, key issues that you have, both setting fares, who achieves revenue, those are the kinds of things that we can do in interim steps along the way.
So you showed a diagram in regards to the traffic. And I'm trying to understand, if I'm going westbound on York, I want to go to Brentford. How would I achieve that?
Through the chair to the councillor, so if you're on York Boulevard, you would turn left at Dundurn, take Dundurn to King Street, turn right on King Street, and get on the ramp to Brentford on your left-hand side, as you do today.
So the left-hand lane, the lane's on the left-hand side from Brentford?
Through the chair to the councillor, correct. Just like you do today if you were doing that movement.
Okay. And if you're going to the other way, then you could just go to York?
Through the chair to the councillor, correct. You could just stay on York Boulevard and go to Toronto via the 403 ramp off of York Boulevard.
Okay. You've indicated that we have no idea the synergies or the challenges on the A-line because you have that coming down Upper James, is it Lower Federal, going to Mohawk and down the upper, or the, what's called now, the James Street Hill. We know it's gonna be a traffic impact as a result of that in Lower City. We're doing this whole EA based on the east-west B-line LRT. Have you built allowances in this process, understanding that maybe?
Councillor, the traffic model, again, takes into account any of the approved changes to date. It does not necessarily preclude the A-line, as you mentioned, BRT. However, there are gonna be further feasibility and an EA that's required for that B-line or for that A-line spur. And they'll have to take, basically, they'll take the model that we've developed and look at the opportunities and look at the various routing that that route could partake in regards to the ridership that it would generate and the type of design that would go into that. I can't say that our project precluded that to go ahead or anything. It just looked at what was the approved changes in the network.
I just, my concern is that there's definitely gonna be an impact. And if you're making assumptions now on this piece, I think you have to build some assumptions on the other piece or we could end up in a pickle. So the next question I have is Eastgate, the section to Eastgate, that's already been approved through the EA process? The 2011?
So through the chair to the councillor, yes, the alignment to Eastgate was part of the original EA.
So could I ask this question?